There was a farm worker. A generation later, he has become an artist and college professor. So he's celebrating immigrants and family.
And that's what I wanted to represent. People who want to get ahead in this country. My parents were immigrants. You know, they made a big sacrifice.
The four murals will be spaced along the outside walls of the complex so they are visible and everyone, residents, pedestrians, and motorists alike can see them.
My father was best known as a labor leader, but his vision was much larger. He understood that after a long, hard day's work, people come home to a whole different set of problems. The lack of access to affordable housing, educational opportunities, access and to the political and civic affairs of their communities.
And it appears future residents of La Plaza Village will get all of the above. The project is set to open in early 2019.
Twenty percent of the 355 apartments going up will be affordable units.
Well, when you think of adopting a pet, a dog or cat probably comes to mind, but have you ever thought of adopting a chicken? Well, many folks have, and they came out to a workshop recently put on by the city to learn how they can adopt and raise one.
Oh, yeah. That one has a lot of personality.
Yep, this is really happening. People from all over LA are adopting chickens as pets.
And I think they're just wonderful little creatures and a lot of fun.
The Department of Animal Services hosted a seminar about chicken adoption and care. The seminar took place at the East Valley Shelter in Van Nuys and was attended by over 200 people.
A lot of people don't know that you can keep these kind of pets as indoor pets. They don't make that much of a mess. And even a rooster that's kept indoors probably makes less noise than a parrot would, I would imagine.
A couple of years ago, I met a rooster named Checkers, who was incredibly friendly. And since then, I've started handling every chicken that comes in here. Very few of the staff and volunteers prioritizes chickens. So I've kind of made it my little niche here at East Valley.
Do we have some crowing?
While the average cost of owning a dog or a cat can run in excess of $1,200 a year, owning a chicken as a pet can be half the cost and can provide the owners with a nice little bonus: the ability to know exactly where their eggs are coming from.
There's a general effort to get us closer to back to nature and to being self-sufficient and eating locally. And, you know, this is part of that effort for my wife and I is to be more self-sufficient for basic necessities.
Since chickens lay the majority of their eggs during the first two years, it doesn't mean their lives are less meaningful to these attendees.
Yo, you keep taking care of it. It's like any other animal. I mean, a cat doesn't give you food. A dog doesn't give you food unless you're in other countries. But, I mean, no, they're companion. And so you just love and take care of them.
So perhaps it's time to think about the chicken as not just a super tasty meal, because we all know they are, but it's time to think of them as a great addition to the family.
LA City Animal Shelters also have rabbits, reptiles, and rodents in need of homes. For more, visit laanimalservices.com. Proposition 10 gets support from local leaders. Downtown's Food Truck Tuesdays are becoming a big hit, and you'll soon be able to tour the Hollyhock House without ever leaving your home. All these stories in City Beat. LA City Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson, advocacy groups, and other state and city officials gathered at Lamarck Park Village to announce their support for Proposition 10, the Affordable Housing Act, which would expand local jurisdiction's ability to enact rent control ordinances statewide. Opponents say Prop 10 would make the housing shortage even worse by discouraging new construction, but Harris-Dawson says Prop 10 will go a long way to help the city's housing crisis.
This proposition is very, very important because it repeals a law that stops cities and communities all over the state from doing what they need to do to care for and to manage the housing situation in their town.
Food truck mania is alive and well in the City of Angels. The trend of buying your hot food at the curb keeps growing. In one part of downtown LA, Food Truck Tuesdays have become a regular part of the work week. Food Truck Tuesdays in downtown LA provide a great midweek treat for office workers, tourists, and others in this part of downtown LA as food trucks converge on Grand Park.
I mean, you get three or four trucks, three or four days that we're here. I can't think of anything better, can you?
The Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs announced that an online virtual reality tour of the Hollyhock House at Barnesdale Art Park is set to debut this fall. The city council approved $133,000 in funding last year to produce the online virtual reality tour of the Frank Lloyd Wright-designed home in East Hollywood, which was built before the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. Because it is a national historic landmark, it cannot be altered to increase accessibility. Mayor Eric Garcetti said everyone should be able to experience LA's cultural landmarks, adding that Hollyhock House is a remarkable piece of architecture, and a virtual reality will allow people with disabilities and the elderly to explore a location with deep history in our city. Dodger slugger Yasiel Puig looks forward to LA's newest ballpark for underserved kids. Gil Reyes has more on the team effort from South LA.
Fun-loving Dodgers outfielder Yasiel Puig helps break ground on the latest Dodgers Dream Field. These are youth ballparks built or refurbished in underserved neighborhoods. Puig says he wished he had one while growing up poor in Cuba.
You know, I come here to the United States to play baseball and be here in Los Angeles and see every day the community and the fans go every night to the stadium and foot the stadium and show my name and help my team to win. And that's the reason I opened my charity foundation to help kids.
Puig's Youth Sports Foundation, as well as the LA Dodgers Foundation, are pitching in to make this happen. The field is being built at Algin Sutton Rec Center in South Los Angeles, an alternative to gang life, says Mom Karina Lundes.
Especially in the neighborhood where we live, we need that. You know, there's a lot of other things going on, so this kind of focuses them in the actual community playing, and so I'm just very happy for it.
This will be the 50th Dodgers Dream Field, the second one at the Rec Center. It's set to open in September.
The Dodgers have just been such a wonderful partner to us, and it's just, we're so grateful to everything that your organization has done.
And every time you need something from me, I go and be here too. Hey, kids, let's go play baseball.
In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Sutton Rec Center will now have two Dodger Dream Fields. The first was established at Rec Center back in 2003. LA Fleet Week rolls into town, and so does the Navy Film Festival. Celebrate a Made in LA Arts and Music Festival, and if you're a vegan, you won't want to miss this street fair. All this and this week's things to do.
We're at Vegan Street Fair!
Vegan Street Fair returns to Los Angeles for 2018 with a plethora of vegan-friendly eats and vendors, including Evolution Burger, Charlie's Brownies, and much more. The fair will include games, live entertainment, karaoke, and more vegan fun than you'll know what to do with. The fair takes place at the Federal Bar in North Hollywood on September 1st through the 2nd. On Saturday, the 1st, you must be 21 or over to enter, while the fair will be open to all ages on Sunday. The fair runs from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM both days. The Federal Bar is located at 5303 Lancashire Boulevard in North Hollywood. Featuring black and white to modern era films, LA Fleet Week 2018, presented by Tom Clancy's Jack Ryan on Amazon Prime Video, will include a Labor Day Weekend Navy Film Festival at the iconic Warner Grand Theater in downtown San Pedro. The festival will celebrate the century-long relationship between the U.S. Navy and the world-renowned film industry that has brought military life, storylines, and battle realities to the big screen since 1918. The Film Fest begins September 1st at 4:00 PM at Warner Grand Theater in San Pedro. Golden Road Brewing presents Made in LA, a two-day music and arts festival celebrating Los Angeles' art and culture. Join Golden Road for great performances, rows of food trucks, art installations, and vendors. Festival runs September 1st through the 3rd from 5:00 PM to 1:30 AM at Golden Road Brewing in Silver Lake. And that's a look at some things to do. The City of LA is gearing up for Independence Day, Mexican Independence Day, that is. Ana Marcos has more on what's in store for this year.
Mexico!
As far as holidays go, El Grito is a big one for LA's Mexican-American community, and this year it promises to grow bigger than ever. El Grito celebrates Mexico's independence in 1810.
Historically, El Grito was this cry for independence amongst ordinary people who did the extraordinary in fighting and achieving their independence.
And in that spirit of independence, who says the Mona Lisa can't wear a sombrero? Councilmember Monica Rodriguez walks by her favorite Pacoima mural, painted by an artist whose work will appear at this year's El Grito. Rodriguez will host this year's Big Bash, and she promises some new experiences at the party.
This year was unique because we've actually extended the celebration into Grand Park as well. We are going to have food trucks. We have Molcajete Domingueiro, which is a marketplace of local artisans.
And there's more. The councilwoman also promises someone special will be taking the stage.
We want to encourage everyone to come out early to get a good spot for the performances because I'm not prepared to actually share at this moment in time who we've secured, but it's going to be big.
The festival is on track to be as colorful as ever and more, and it's free.
For more information, visit elgritole2018 eventbrite.com. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Please be seated. We have a quorum. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Buscaino moves. Krikorian seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rue moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds, next.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 1 to October 26, 2018, sir.
So without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 12 are items noted for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on Items 1 through 12, sir.
Then let us continue to the next section of agenda items.
Items 13 through 57 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 22 and 48 have been posted and circulated for council's consideration. Also, 16 and 21 need to be held on the desk, sir.
Well, let's hold those two items, but let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. There are no questions or concerns from the members, so Mr. Bonin?
19 special.
And let's hold 19 as well. Let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Sheriff asks that numbers 31 and 33 go forthwith.
So ordered. Continue. Madam Clerk.
Items 58 through 66 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on 58 through 66, sir.
Okay, then let us move on to the next set of agenda items.
Item 67 through 71 are items scheduled for closed session. There was no quorum in budget and finance, so cards need to be taken, sir.
Okay, then we'll continue. There are cards on every one of the items?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special, public comment, or presentation, sir.
Thank you very much. Why don't, at this point in time, I recognize Mr. Buscaino for a very important and timely presentation.
President. At this time, I'd like to all ask you to rise for our National Anthem to be sung by the Bob Hope USO Show Troop.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose cross-strikes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the realms we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Give them a round of applause, the US Bob Hope USO Show Troop. Thank you very much. An amazing rendition of our National Anthem. And a reminder, as we pledge our allegiance and sing the National Anthem, the greatest symbol of freedom is our United States of America flag. And it gives me great pleasure, Mr. President and colleagues, to welcome yet again another LA Fleet Week to the City of Angels as we welcome our angels and our military personnel who are here from the United States Navy. Let's give them a round of applause and warm welcome to the John Ferraro Chambers. And, Mr. President, what an amazing tribute. Thank you. As we pause and reflect on the life... Thank you, as we pause and reflect on the life of Senator John McCain. A true hero, prisoner of war, service and sacrifice was unmatched. Served our great country as a United States Senator. And this week, throughout Fleet Week, we will pause and remember John McCain's service to our great country. By also standing here before you, colleagues, is Vice Admiral Alexander, Commander of the US Third Fleet of the United States Navy. Let's give him a warm welcome to Los Angeles. Thank you, sir. And Vice Admiral Alexander is no stranger to the L.A. waterfront in San Pedro. He helped guide the USS Abraham Lincoln over about ten years ago or so, was that? 2011, during what was called then Navy Days. So we moved from Navy Days to Fleet Week, and the Abraham Lincoln was a huge draw for our city and our region. Also joining us here, as we, the importance of Fleet Week as we know it is to pause and reflect and pay tribute to the men and women of our service. It also serves as a huge boost to our local economy. We're gonna be welcoming visitors from around the country to the L.A. waterfront in the City of Los Angeles. And joining us is General Manager of our Tourism Department, Don Lu. Thank you, Mr. Lu, for joining us, as well as the Port of Los Angeles Administration representatives and a number of Veteran Affairs organizations here. Also represented here are the US Marines, the US Coast Guard, the Royal Canadian Navy, and the Canadian Coast Guard. And throughout the country, the United States Navy has over 300 active duty personnel and nearly 100,000 ready reserve. With 282 deployable battleships, the US Navy is a force to be reckoned with, keeping us all safe every hour, every day. And whether it's a domestic disaster or a global emergency, our sea service members are there to provide both humanitarian efforts, disaster relief, and protection of the most vulnerable across the world. And it's great pleasure that we celebrate and recognize the L.A. Fleet Week here before us in this body, along the L.A. waterfront. L.A. Fleet Week gives every Angelino the opportunity to thank our sea service members for the critical work they do. And for us, it hits home. The harbor area is very rich military history, with the drum barracks in Wilmington and also Fort MacArthur in San Pedro. But it's also a number of service personnel that've come out of, in and out of the harbor area communities. I'm often reminded of John Furt, who was John McCain's cellmate, other POW. John was shot down during the Vietnam War and after many years was given a warm welcome to Daniels Field in San Pedro. I'm also remember the sacrifice and service of my high school classmate, David LaRiva, who was our local Hurt Locker hero in San Pedro. And Mike Camereri, an Italian immigrant, my brother-in-law who served in the United States Navy. And even today, a dear friend of ours, Mr. Joey Damacoli, is serving overseas in the United States Marines. So, L.A. Fleet Week, again, gives us a time to reflect, bless, and remember those veterans, those who paid the ultimate sacrifice, and those currently serving in our military personnel. But this L.A. Fleet Week is bigger and better. It seems to get bigger and better every year, Mr. President. This year's presented, L.A. Fleet Week is presented by Tom Clancy's Jack Ryan on Amazon Prime Video. And the show's premiere celebration will take place on the Battleship Iowa on opening night this Friday. Everyone is welcome. Angelinos, those viewing on Channel 35, council members, your residents, are invited to come down to tour one of the ships docked at the port, watch the fireworks on the Battleship Iowa, cheer on the five-on-five basketball tournament. Now, yours truly, CD-15 will take on the reigning champs, the Coast Guards, on Saturday. Now, of course, if you look at the odds, Vice Admiral, we got a tough challenge ahead of us, but we've been practicing and ready for the five-on-five challenge. Folks will come down to the waterfront, watch equipment demonstrations or aerial demonstrations. And, Mr. President, I know you're a big Beach Boys fan. The Beach Boys are coming to San Pedro on Saturday night. And everyone's welcome, the Military Appreciation Concert. Attend Brews Blues and BBQ at the SS Lane Victory. But we have been prepared, in preparation for this week, our local Chambers of Commerce in San Pedro and Wilmington. I was just with Mayor Garcetti at the presser, announcing Fleet Week on the Battleship Iowa, where Rear Admiral Yancey just shared with me how he looks forward to returning to Raffaello's, an Italian restaurant on the corner of Fourth and Pacific. And you see sailors beginning, starting as yesterday, last night, walking the streets of downtown San Pedro and being welcomed by our restaurants and our cafes and coffee shops and hotels. And we welcome you all with open arms. And we encourage you, just know that Siren's Coffee House on 7th Street, right? The bomb, thank you. Oh, we shouldn't say that, but it's, yeah. Community members are able to purchase wooden coins. And those wooden coins go to a cup of coffee for our sailors and military personnel. I want to thank Yolanda Regalado for leading that effort. But help me welcome the Vice Admiral, John Alexander, to the podium. He is one of the key people responsible for protecting our Pacific waters, covering approximately 50 million square miles of the Eastern and Northern Pacific Ocean, including the Bering Sea and the Sector of the Arctic. In 2007, he became the 29th Commander of the Third Fleet. We're very lucky and blessed to have him with us. Help me welcome, to say a few words, Vice Admiral John Alexander.
Thank you very much, Joe. It's my great honor to be here today, and I want to thank you so much for opening your beautiful city to the Navy. Less than one-half of 1% of our population serves in the Navy. But it requires the remaining 99% of support to keep us a viable force. And so, given the small numbers that we have in the Navy these days, it's important that we bring the Navy to cities around the world so they get to meet these fine young sailors, Marines, coasties. No matter whether you call them Generation X, Y, Z, or Millennials, they are all great Americans, and they all want to serve their country. So I would ask you, when you get a chance, pull them off to the side, talk to them, and make sure you get to understand the quality of individuals that are protecting you and this country. So, again, we got Scout, who is an MCM, and Dewey, who's a DDG, that are down there. They will be open for tours, and we hope to see you there. So thanks very much, Joe, for having us today.
Thank you, sir. So again, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, Mayor Garcetti, we recognize L.A. Fleet Week once again and pay tribute to the men and women of service to our great city. And we know Los Angeles will be rolling out the blue carpet for you and your troops. So thanks again, we honor you, we bless you, and thank you for your service to our great country and our city. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayino and Admiral. Thank you for visiting City Hall. Okay, we're gonna go into the multiple section of our public comment. I'm gonna call Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you have Items 2 through 12, 58 through 71. And then your general public comment. Okay, start his time.
Due to my disability, I'm going to speak specifically on the topics. You know, people with disabilities like lighting because it helps shed light on the criminals who take away our communities. Especially when we have quality-of-life issues, such as my disability with mental health, as Herman Jason Wesson said. And then...
Stay on the topic, Mr. Herman.
And then also, thank you, sir, for the consideration of hearing the protest and ordinance there. And Item 5, you see? Even you have a point of view on street lighting, sir, and I need to acknowledge that, thank you. And then I go on to the pedestrian crosswalks since I have a disability, such as some of you who suffer mental health and have to smoke a lot of cigarettes. You see, in CD-13, the motion by David Rue, and that also of the Monkey Sun, Relative Service Associated, for the transfer is $12,000. That's close to $13,000. That's a perfect number, 13, similar to my 666 problems. But real property trust funds actually help provide us with a clear indication that we need supplies and repairs and salaries and fuck your overtime. And then, again, on 65, with Fat Monica Rodriguez installing a street banner, maybe we can identify why Los Angeles can design quarter cities to send these non-event streets don't have appropriate fucking banner programs, Mr. Councilman? And then, what about this favorite one about ballot measures? See, when I go vote, I'm disabled. I have a hard time trying to push the fucking, fucking little hole in the thing, and it's difficult. So I'm glad that people are listening and making it adjustable for people with retards like Jose Weezer on Item 60. But as you see, Mr. Weezer doesn't want to challenge a disabled person off of the Avenue 56 of York Boulevard, where I used to sleep in my vehicle. Nor does he want to take it on with me on Item 61, the wetback from Zacatecas in the maintenance of Colorado Boulevard. When I used to clean the districts, I was super at that. And now I recommend then that the council subject the approval of the mayor. Why don't the fucking assholes shut up?
Can I interrupt the public speaker who is here at every meeting? And whether I'm a wetback or not has nothing to do with the discussion and business at hand. He is off-topic. He's been off-topic numerous occasions in his comments, making comments about people's looks and appearances and other vulgarities. He's way off-topic. I would ask this individual to leave the meeting. This is unfathomable, and it does not fit with the decorum of the meeting. So I would ask this individual to leave, thank you.
Okay, now you have your general public comment.
Has the City of Los Angeles devised an official plan to retaliate? You heard it from Jose Weezer right now. Suppressing us from free speech, denying us the right to be heard here, in my house, the podium. No white-faced nigger like Jose is gonna tell me what to do in my country called America, just as you saw the fine men, all white, representing me, a white nigger with attitude under MOU. So, again, the plan to intimidate and retaliate because of our subsequent disputes should not apply or deny me the right to general public comment. So call 202-225-1766, 'cause the white cunt Roy Ball Allard of the 40th District has denied me access to the Citadel to talk...
Your time, your time, your time is expired. Thank you, your time is expired. Let's get Mr. Spindler. You have Items 2 through 13. No, just hold his time. 2 through 12, 58 through 65, and your general public comment.
So, begin.
Yes, let's get to these closed-session items, you fucking assholes. So, you again have involved a child in the territory of Guillermo Torres. Guillermo Torres is not a wetback, but you treated him like it when you beat the shit out of him. Please settle the case, thank you. Then we get to Shashi Yaya versus City of Los Angeles on your fucking sidewalks. That was in Nuri's district. Nuri tries to kill Armenians walking in the 6th district. Fuck that and fuck the settlement. Then we get to the Schneider. Schneider. Sidewalks for the Schneider, yes. Sidewalks are dangerous. And even Marquis Harris Dawson knows this because he's fixing his sidewalks because when Mr. Spindler drove down Washington Boulevard, he repaved it. Thank you, Mr. Dawson, you did a good job. See, when you do a good job, but beat the pigs, so. But when you do a bad job, well, you know. Then you get to Number 70, the Khalid Robonton. Another person, beat the shit out of them courtesy of the Police Department. Why? Did you read the report? It's because they goddamn called her a wetback and they settled the case for $1 million. He is a wetback. Then Number 70 Stevens. Stevens isn't a wetback. Jose Weezer's a wetback, he just admitted it, but Mr. Stevens is not a wetback. And he should have the Police Department prosecuted for murder, attempted murder, yes. Look at all the killings going on by your police. Why are your police so violent? Look at them over here, guns and badges. Look at these psychotic killers known as police. And that's why Mr. Wesson yesterday said he has a team of mental health experts. Not for Mr. Herman.
On topic, Mr. Spindler, on topic.
Yes, of course. Have another cigarette on me.
No, Mr. Spindler, let's go to his general public comment. You're off, you're off topic.
The fucking problem is this. We're not allowed to talk at your phony meetings. If somebody calls the Zacatecas, a wetback, it is constitutional protection. If somebody takes, and they're gay, and they buy a black child and use it for political purposes, again. It's child abuse, it's on the topic. And then we have the big butts, that again is on topic. Then we have Peppa Pig with that fucking stapper of his that tries to kill homeless people, on topic. And then finally, and shame, shame on Mr. Sidillo. Shame on him. They're trying to take the tennis courts on Lafayette Park. You allowed this pig over here to go to the neighborhood council in MacArthur Park and throw me out and threaten to arrest me for attending a public meeting. Fuck you.
Your time, your time is expired, and please take your seat. Okay, let's vote on some items now. Madam Clerk, if we could vote on Items 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And let's vote on 11, 12, 59, 60, 61, and 64. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And now, if we could vote on Items 65 and 66. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Corretts? For a presentation?
Colleagues, cancer is something that, one way or another, has affected everyone. It shows no discrimination across gender, race, age, or socioeconomic class. And it presents a tremendous burden to patients and their loved ones. I lost my mother to pancreatic cancer when she was only 53 years old. I lost my favorite cousin at about the same age. Just in my office alone, I have two cancer survivors. Just in my office alone, I have two cancer survivors. Colleagues, we've mourned together at losses of our relatives, our friends, and members of our city family. But we're here in our positions in the city because we're solution-driven, and we're searching to reduce those numbers and find a future of relief from the cancer epidemic. As some of you may remember, two years ago, I had the honor of declaring September 9, 2016, a Stand Up to Cancer Day in the City of Los Angeles. That was actually the third time the city had declared the day of the biennial telecast as Stand Up to Cancer Day. Today, we do it again as Stand Up to Cancer reaches 10 years of life-saving research achievements, a whole decade of innovative and groundbreaking transformational research partly supported by the Stand Up to Cancer telecast. This year, Stand Up to Cancer will be returning for its sixth telecast, which will air live on Friday, September 7 at 8:00 p.m. For one hour, we'll have the world's attention, and by tuning in and supporting, we all have the power to make an impact so we can continue to change the course of cancer research. And now I think we have the video.
Tonight, we stand and dare to dream big.
On Friday, September 7, join Stand Up to Cancer.
It takes courage and a whole lot of hope to take on cancer.
For all the inspiration.
This groundbreaking movement will inspire you.
All the laughter.
Made her turn towards the theater and Steve Carell.
I'm here to teach you how to conduct a self-exam.
I thought I was getting a massage.
By the way, you are.
If you change one letter in cancer, it becomes dancer.
What?
All the music.
All the stars.
Stand Up to Cancer. Keep this revolutionary movement going strong.
So that every cancer patient can become a survivor.
Every network, every star.
Dare to dream big with us.
One night to save lives. Get ready to see it all. Join the millions in the fight against cancer. Tune in live Friday, September 7, 8:00 Central.
So September 7 is a crucial day for humanity and for its health, and on that day, the extraordinary Stand Up to Cancer telecast live from Los Angeles will take place, features an immense array of beloved and exciting stars of entertainment, and showcases tremendous performances. Stand Up to Cancer will inspire and empower countless people across the globe on that day, giving us all a great way to support the fight against cancer while providing essential knowledge in the form of stirring messages and images of hope, scientific and medical progress, individual heroism, and united activism. The Stand Up to Cancer telecast on September 7 will raise funds that accelerate innovative cancer research. The broadcast continues to help build public support for Stand Up to Cancer's groundbreaking transformational research that can provide patients with new therapies to save lives now. They have raised almost half a billion dollars in the 10 years that they have been doing this, which is quite remarkable and made tremendous progress. It's my special honor to introduce you to Stand Up to Cancer's co-founder and member of the Stand Up to Cancer Council of Founders and Advisors, Kathleen Lobb.
Welcome. Give her a round of applause.
Thank you. I am just delighted to be here today. Everyone involved in the fight against cancer has a wonderful friend and supporter and council member, Coretts, and we are so grateful, all of us at Stand Up, to him, to you, Mr. President, to the entire city council for honoring Stand Up to Cancer the way you do with this proclamation and helping bring public attention to our work. As you just heard, we're 10 years old now, and the main focus of what we asked the research community to do was to collaborate across different institutions and disciplines. In those 10 years, we now have funded 79 teams of researchers, 1,500 scientists at 180 institutions in the U.S. and around the world. And I think there's no better proof of the effectiveness of team science than the fact that there are five FDA-approved treatments that this work contributed to in breast cancer, in pancreatic cancer, ovarian, and in difficult-to-treat childhood leukemias. And that's really light speed in cancer research to get that number of new treatments out there to patients in that span of time. And I would just add, given that we have been honoring Senator McCain this morning, that we also have a team that's hard at work in the fight against glioblastoma, which is such a difficult brain cancer. We also announced in our press event this morning that we're launching a new collaboration right here in Los Angeles. Stand Up to Cancer and Charles R. Drew University are undertaking an effort to make sure that we can improve enrollment in clinical trials in medically underserved communities, which is so important. That will be a national effort ultimately, and it's starting right here in Los Angeles. We're so fortunate to have the whole entertainment industry here in the city involved in harnessing its power to engage the public to support research that is truly saving lives now. You heard our telecast is not this Friday, the Friday after Labor Day on the 7 at 8:00 p.m. And what started as something that was carried by three networks, 10 years later, we have 70 broadcasting cable networks and streaming platforms carrying the show, plus a pre-show across YouTube, Twitter, and Facebook for the hour before. So I hope that you all can watch and encourage your friends and family to watch. You know, 100% of the donations from the public go to this research, which is really and truly saving lives. So on behalf of all of my colleagues at Stand Up, all of the researchers whose work we support, and most importantly, the patients whose lives are being saved, I just want to thank each and every one of you for your support.
And I just want to emphasize that including Charles R. Drew is going to make a tremendous difference because currently, the percentage of people of color in clinical trials is incredibly tiny, and that is going to turn this around and, we believe, make a tremendous difference in those communities. Now, without further ado, for your continued support and dedication to accelerating the pace of cancer research, the City Council of the City of Los Angeles hereby salutes and celebrates Stand Up to Cancer by declaring September 7, 2018, Stand Up to Cancer Day in the City of Los Angeles. The city is grateful and treasures all involved in this effort because the fight against cancer is a vital grassroots movement of dedicated activism and devoted skill for the sake of compassion, progress, life, and good health. So let's recognize Stand Up to Cancer and thank them for all the incredible work that
Again, thank you for your service and thank you, Mr. Coretts. Okay, do we have a, is there a Ms. Smith that signed up for public comment? Okay, I don't see her, so Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on items four and six. Ms. Smith, would you come forward? Ms. Smith?
No.
Okay, then on items four and six, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, can we pull up the, or at this time, let's take up the closed session items? Would you like to read those, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 67 in the case entitled Guillermo Torres versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend $298,000 in settlement. Item number 68 in the case entitled Rafik Shashikyan versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $200,000 in settlement. Item 69 in the case entitled Miriam Schneider versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $200,000 in settlement. Item number 70 in the case of Khalila Khalidra Bonton for et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $450,000 in settlement. Finally, item 71 in the case entitled Teagan Stevens versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to receive and file this matter and as much as it was resolved at trial, sir.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Mr. President, just for the record, the amendment for number 19 has been posted and circulated and is before council, sir.
Mr. Bonney.
Mr. President, this is an item in my district, and I'm in the unusual circumstance of asking for council to reverse what I recommended in Transportation Committee just a week ago. It's an unusual situation. This is essentially a by-right project in my district, a mixed-use development that is located off an alleyway. The only ingress and egress is off a narrow alley with blind spots that has room for only single cars. But it is apparently a legal project, something I think we need to look at prospectively because it's nuts to have this be the ingress and egress. And some of my constituents raised completely understandable and legitimate concerns about this. They hired an attorney and very creatively, I thought, tried to appeal the ingress/egress and the traffic mitigation on what's otherwise a by-right project through the West LA Timp, which is a West LA development fee that pays for traffic mitigations. City Attorney advised that we deny the appeal in committee, but DOT left me a little bit of daylight I thought we could sneak under, and so we voted to grant the appeal. Since then, we have heard again from the City Attorney's Office, and apparently, there ain't no daylight. So extremely reluctantly, I need to ask that we reverse my prior decision and approve 19A, which is the amending motion. Thank you.
Okay, members, go ahead and vote on item 19 as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Go ahead and bring up items 16 and 21 together. Go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Go ahead and vote on item 58. Let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote. 13 ayes. You have one speaker, Rob Quad, are you here? Rob? Mr. Quad, good morning. You filled out cards for general public comments and items 62 and 63. Why don't you start with the two items first, and then we'll give you a one minute of general public comment. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. For item 63 regarding ballot simplification, I'd like to draw your attention to the language regarding the creation of a municipal bank. I support the idea in theory. Hell, a year and a half ago, I was advocating for as much. But what I don't support is a proposal that is inherently confounding to the average voter because it offers everything without assuring anything. What you are asking voters to do is amend our charter and offer City Hall a legislative blank check to do whatever it wants. This measure is going to be sold to voters as paving the way for an institution doing good for the public but with no safeguards to that end. We can see a pattern with this council and our ballot measures. Not long ago, we saw Measure HHH, which campaigners said would offer 10,000 units of supportive housing. Now, city officials are projecting we could see less than 6,000 units of supporter housing. Not long ago, we saw Measure C, which council said would increase accountability with police discipline. That was rejected by extensive research, nearly every criminal justice reform group, and even Chief Beck. While you may be pursuing the most politically savvy option, it's more of a bait and switch than good policymaking. For my general public comment, I'd like to turn to why so many are skeptical of this.
Just fix the clock. Go ahead.
Over the last 50 years, voter turnout in L.A. has fallen from 76% to nearly 10%. Voters don't believe in this institution. It's sat idle for decades as the drop program, which was supposed to be deficit-neutral, has cost close to $2 billion. It's trying to build its way out of a housing crisis with unaffordable luxury loss. In downtown L.A., we have a 12% vacancy rate, thousands of units sitting vacant because nobody can afford them. This council has allowed 25,000 rent-controlled units to be destroyed. Is this city for the many or just the money? If you want voters to trust you, with a municipal institution, you should do three things to offer a better process and restore people's faith in this hall. One, pass comprehensive lobbying reform recommended by the Ethics Commission earlier this year. Two, pass campaign finance reform measures recommended by the Ethics Commission last week. And lastly, remove the perception of pay-to-play interest by adopting Metro's recusal model. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Quad. The next speaker is Ruben Robinson. Are you here? Good morning, sir. You filled out a card for item 62.
I didn't come here for that, but what I came here to talk to you.
Hold on for just a second. Is it general public comments?
General public comments.
Okay, let me get these two items out of the way, and then I will call you right back. Hold on for just a second. I thought you filled out, it looks like you filled out a card for number 62. That's not the case?
No, ma'am.
Okay, give me just a second. Members, just go ahead and vote on items 62 and 63. Let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote. 13 ayes. Okay, Mr. Robinson, did you want, you have a general public comment, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. I came here to discuss with, I'm in Council District 9, Councilman Price District. We're still having a problem with something that you guys voted on for the street vendors, and it is getting way out of hand because it's spilling over into the residential area where there's school kids, and school safety is my main concern. That's going to get, somebody's kid's going to get hit before the city council or the traffic department gets involved in this. This has been discussed with the city councilmen, been discussed with the police department, been discussed with sanitation department, and one thing I wanted to say, thanks for one thing to councilmen that we did get, that alleys cleaned, but we still got work to do in that area, and that we need to get that done. And that's something that I have a lot of respect for you guys that are city council women and councilmen that's here. I didn't come here to disrespect anyone here. I came for you guys to listen to a concern that I have.
I appreciate that, sir. Thank you very much for your honesty. Thank you, sir. Mr. Herman, stop disrupting this meeting. Okay, we're going to continue on general public comment. Jorge Castañeda? Is anyone here with that name? Castañeda?
Mommy, mommy.
No one here with that name? Sir, are you Mr. Castañeda?
Yes, mommy.
Patricia McAllister and Anna Brooks.
Coming, coming, for bus, it's coming, mommy.
Mr. Castañeda? Followed by Patricia McAllister and Anna Brooks. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, yes, my name is Jorge Castañeda with Coalition to Preserve L.A. So this might sound a little bit out of order. Do apologize. If everyone from the Cultural Heritage Commission, this is regarding the Crossroads Hearing that occurred recently, if everyone from the CHC commissioners to the public are held to certain standard following stated criteria but city council is not, which is what was observed recently, then it is impossible to have an effective process since no one will know what to put into an application if no matter how quote-off topic a council member may. The. member may be with a personal reason or how whimsically they may be using it to make a decision. A Plum member complained of too many HCM, historical cultural monument nominations coming forward. If there is, uh, excuse me, there is no rule or limit on nominations, again, there is no rule or limit on nominations. Further, we do not think imputing the judgment of the CHC and staff by saying the bar is too low and needs to be set higher...
Thank you, Mr. Castañeda, your time is up, sir.
...is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Followed by Patricia McAllister, are you here? Ms. McAllister, you have your one minute of general public comment.
And number one, right? Number one and...
Doesn't look like...
I signed up for number...
Number one was continued, Ms. McAllister.
Oh, okay.
So you got your one minute of general public comment.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, Assistant President, um, Martinez, we need an investigation of the city attorney's office. I have found about fifteen million that is, uh, they're ghost employees, you've got people who are not attorneys with the Bar Association, Xena Houston, she's making two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. If you go to the, um, the Bar Association's website, she's not, uh, an attorney. Susan Fraun, she's making two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. You also have a, um, Gail Takahashi, she's making two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. And you allowed people to work as attorneys and they weren't attorneys. Here's one guy for twenty-two years, was paid as an attorney, Oscar Winslow, he's now making a hundred-and-eighty thousand. Laquinta Calvin, she's worked seventeen years as a non-attorney. Now, these, they're now attorneys, they are attorneys now, but they were working as non-attorneys. We need a federal investigation of the city attorney's office, and I've asked some government agencies to investigate myself, I've done that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Next speaker is Anna Brooks, followed by Mickey Jackson and Leobardo Zamora. Good morning.
Good morning. The one-hundred-eight-year-old bungalow on McCadden must be retained with the project. It is the most intact bungalow from the independent city of Hollywood when alcohol was forbidden and before the arrival of film in town. It is also the initial home of Major Conkle, the first smoke controller on the West Coast. The Talbot Wood on Los Palmas is the last known work by the team of Elsie Talbot, dress designer, financier, and Howard Wood, designer contractor. It is the only residential duplex to officially be converted to a business duplex while keeping its one-hundred-two-year-old craftsman shingle details. Only you have the power to preserve these Hollywood icons. Thank you to the CHC, Craig Bullock, and Lambert Geesinger for requiring the retention and rehabilitation of the Bullinger Building into the next century. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mickey Jackson, followed by Leobardo Zamora. Is Mr. Zamora here? Do you wanna, you're next, sir.
I'm speaking regarding the four HCM nominations, which you've already voted against. We have a lot of concerns about this and the process. Councilmember O'Farrell's support for these HCM nominations has changed every time the office testified at a meeting. The first CHC meeting, March fifteenth, they supported everything. Second CHC meeting, they reiterated their, their prioritization of historic nomination. The Plum meeting, no, they didn't support it anymore. This is concerning because nothing changed on the buildings, just the opinion of the office as they worked more and more with the developer. In light of the issues at the Plum meeting and the flip-flopping of the council office on historical monuments, we asked, we were going to ask the city council to vote for the CHC combinations. We hope you will reconsider your vote. The public and those nominating HCMs must be assured of a transparent, consistent process that respects the criteria of the CHC.
Your time is up, thank you. Mr. Zamora, followed by Bill Billinger, is Mr. Billinger here? Bill Billinger, followed by Susan Hunter and Omar. Good morning.
Good morning, city councilmen and women. My name is Leobardo Zamora Jr., and I'm a graduate of the University of Southern California. I earned a real estate license in two thousand and nine and a mortgage loan origination license in two thousand and eleven. In April, between April twelfth and fourteenth of two thousand and fifteen, twenty-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars was taken out of my account without my authorization by a former property manager that was paying people, the former occupants of a home, to enter into lease agreements with them and to, in an effort to collect rent checks without my authorization or consent. This has caused the desecration of fourteen thirty-eight West Twenty-Eighth Street. I'm here regarding case seven-two-five-six-seven-four, uh, which, and I'd like to make reference to California Civil Code one-nine-four-one-point-two. It states that if the tenant is in substantial violation of the...
Mr. Zamora, thank you, I'm sorry to cut you off, your minute is up. Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Billinger. Is Mr. Billinger here? He's not coming. Ms. Susan Hunter, followed by Omar. Good morning, ma'am.
Hi, Susan Hunter with the Coalition to Preserve Los Angeles. We're raising concerns with the Plum hearing held on eight-twenty-one. Councilmember Weezer did not amend the motion and did not get a second for the amending of the motion to disapprove any of the four CHCs recommended on that day. Uh, today's items are twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and we're concerned that this calls the validity of those votes into question. Uh, many of the questions asked by the members of the Plum had nothing to do with the criteria establishing for nominating HCMs, which means that there is a double standard that kicks in when city council is involved. We are held by the CHC to only specify CHC criteria. That criteria has to be the basis for rejecting a nomination, especially when nominations have been recommended by the commissions and the council, and they are rejecting the opinion of their own experts. When council members create random criteria on the spot with no notice or progress, it negates the entire reason for a process. At worst, it suggests that nominations are being accepted or rejected in violation of the criteria, maybe on whim or for political inconvenience, and of course, in a conflict of city charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Omar.
Hello, city council and staff. My name is Omar Baldwin, founder and CEO of Peace Please Nonprofit. I'm just here to say that, uh, we can change the world, just here to give you guys inspiration because I, I, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what you guys go through on a daily basis, but what I go through on a daily basis is, uh, figuring out how can I change the world? How can I structure my nonprofit to change the world? And how can I influence others to change the world? Today, uh, is, uh, I posted something on Facebook about Martin Luther King, he gave a speech. My name is Omar Baldwin, uh, I guess, like the Baldwin. He was like, uh, Baldwin, if you research Baldwin, uh, he was like one of the first kings of Jerusalem. He was like a Christian king. He was the first Christian king of Jerusalem. But I'm no Christian king, but I believe in God, I believe in Allah, I believe in Mohammed, I also believe in Buddha and Jesus.
Thank you very much, Omar. Uh, Madam Clerk, that concludes general public comment was before us.
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred, members, are there any announcements? The announcement members, can we please all rise for adjourned motions, including our members of the public? Mr. Weston?
Thank you, uh, madam, madam president and, and members. Like I said at the beginning of today, we all rise to adjourn in the, uh, memory of John Sidney, which I didn't know his middle name was Sidney McCain the Third. You know, the, the McCain family has a lot of history in this great country of ours. His great-great-grandfather, William McCain, was a plantation owner in Mississippi, owned over fifty slaves. And in eighteen sixty-three, he was killed fighting for the Confederacy. McCain's family had a tradition of being in military service. His grandfather, John Sidney McCain the First, was an admiral in the Navy. And his dad, John Sidney McCain Number Two, was an admiral in the Navy as well. So it would only make sense that as a young man, Senator McCain would go to the Naval Academy where he graduated, and then you would think I would stand and say he graduated with honors, but he, he didn't. He was at the low end of his class. And a lot of people believe that that's when the maverick in him began to be displayed. And what I mean by that is he questioned the rules, okay? He questioned why he had to take certain classes that didn't make sense to him going forward in his military service. So I don't know if that was a maverick or if it was just an individual that was becoming his own person and becoming independent. He was almost killed twice. Wait a minute, let's stop for a minute and let's get Mr., let's get, uh...
Please escort Mr. Herman out of our council chambers. He continues to disrupt our meeting. We were warned earlier this morning to continue to disrupt our meeting during our adjourned motions.
We're gonna get Mr. Spindler.
No, Mr. Herman, you're done, thank you very much.
As well.
Mr. Spindler can... Mr. Spindler, sergeants, can you also...
It's Mr. Spindler.
Mr. Spindler needs to go as well.
No, it was Mr. Spindler who started everything.
Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry that they're making the disturbance and stopping our meeting yet again.
Mister, mi...
And he's shouting all the way out, as usual.
Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Attorney, the level of Mr. Herman's protest is really going beyond annoying, and it's moving into alarming...
Agreed.
...and borderline frightening. So I want to go on record indicating that his behavior needs to be watched, given the variety of things that are going around, going on in this country. Uh, it would appear to me that there's some kind of, he's degenerating or something, so we should pay a closer amount of attention on him. So for those that are listening and for those that are watching, I apologize for that disturbance. But we're talking about a great American who almost lost his life twice. There was a huge fire that occurred on an aircraft carrier that Senator McCain was on, and he just escaped, serious injury. And we all know about his plane being shot down and him being captured. Members, prison anywhere is bad, but to be a prisoner of war where individuals don't even hide the fact that you are being tortured or brainwashed is just, I cannot wrap my head around that. But this guy, whose father, I guess, was given a big assignment, I guess he was the commander of the Pacific, and when that happened, the North Vietnamese, for propaganda purposes, were going to release him early. He refused to be released early unless every other individual that was captured before him was released. How many people in the sound of my voice, how many of us standing around this horseshoe or in these council chambers could stand up and say without hesitation that if we were in his shoes and offered a release, that we would have refused to accept that release? That is bravery, that is courage, that is leading by example, that is an American hero. A lot of people don't know that the senator was a big sports buff, especially baseball. And every morning, I listened to a talk sports show called The Dan Patrick Show, and from time to time, Senator McCain would call into this show. He was, uh, in isolation, and he would communicate via some form of Morse code, Morse code, and they would be talking about baseball games. And who might make it to the World's Series, the World Series? A great band. We all know that he served in Congress, uh, as a congressman for a couple of terms and was elected senator by the great state of Arizona, and I believe they elected him not because he was a maverick but because he did ask questions. He did question the rules. He was very independent. As we all know, he ran for president of the United States, and he ran against former President Bush, which was the beginning of when campaigns really, really got ugly. And all of us know that he adopted a young lady who is very dark-skinned. And during this race, members of his own party said all kinds of terrible things about him, things that many of us around this horseshoe would want to fight somebody over. But he did not abandon his party. He made peace with President Bush, and he did the very best that he could to make peace with the Republican Party. And eight years later, he was selected by that party to be their candidate for president of the United States. And again, we all know that today, in politics, it is a rough and tumble sport, campaigns, that it takes sometimes sharp elbows, and that was not John McCain's strong suit. He did not like that, but you know you have to do certain things to win a campaign. But the moment when he stood up at a town hall meeting, when some older lady, senior citizen with white fuzzy hair, got up and said, "Obama is not a citizen, we can't support him, he's a bad guy, he's an Arab." John McCain could have kinda walked through that to kinda throw red meat on the grill and, but he took a deep breath, and he walked towards her, and he looked her in the eye, and he said, "No, that's not true. He is a good man." That's the John McCain that I will always remember. The John McCain that worked very hard to deliver the services to the people of this country, the services that they want, they need, and they expect. The one that would reach across party lines. Fingold, McCain Fingold, that is the person that we honor, a true American hero. And I'm just proud to lead this council in a journey in the memory of a life well-lived of not just an American hero, but I think a human being that was just... of not just an American hero, but I think a human being that was just a darn good man. I ask that we adjourn in the memory of John Sidney McCain III. Thank you, Madam President.
Very well, thank you, Mr. President. There are no other adjourned motions, our meeting is adjourned, thank you.